Could also be some traits, somebody on the autism spectrum, things like not making eye contact, things like stimming, hand flapping, hand wrangling, you know, speech patterns that can be specific to somebody on the autism spectrum, things like that. So we want our officers to again always be thinking about, you know, officer safety, of course, scene safety, of course, but you know, what are the other things that could be driving somebody's behavior that is coming in as a call for suspicious? And then the other thing that that breaks my heart to hear about, but it's just reality, you know, we have a lot, you know, people with autism spectrum disorders are far more likely to be victimized and victims of crime than people who have a typical neuro development. And so there are special considerations, of course, when you're interviewing a victim that you need to know about if somebody is on the spectrum. You know, the way that you ask questions is important. You know, if somebody is likely to, for example, answer yes to every question, that's something that we need to know in advance, you know, so we can conduct a thorough investigation. And then also, you know, we want to train officers about the particularities when caregiver abuse, again, it's, you know, I hate to talk about it, but it happens. And when caregiver abuse occurs, we need to know the particular agencies that need to be notified, you know, whether it's DPPT or, you know, or if it's an elder abuse case, if the victim is a child, then it would be DCF. Where else do we want to go with this? Chris, did you want to jump in? Did I miss anything?
No, it was great. I don't know if they want to know a little bit about what the training consists of during CIT.
Yeah, very briefly.
Okay, real briefly. So as part of our 40 hour CIT training, we incorporate autism at one of the mornings, typically the third or fourth morning of the training. And we use instructors from Alec. I think Janet sent a pamphlet out. It's the Autism Law Enforcement Coalition. It's a group of first responders or retired first responders who have immediate family members, typically children on the spectrum, who go through train to trainer and then go about training first responders throughout the state. We're fortunate, we use Marty Baker. He's a retired Norwood Police Lieutenant and teaching for years. Marty's got a now 27 year old adult son named Drew, who he speaks about quite a bit in his training and he shares his personal and family experiences, as well as his perspective as a police officer. And what we focus on in the training is, you know, it's a combination of lecture, videos, case studies. And I think importantly, it starts off, we pull the room, typically a group of about 30, 35 officers, who has immediate family members who are on the spectrum. Generally, I'd say about a 10 or 15% response positive. And we kind of talk about that a little bit. So it sort of brings it home, I think, similar to a lot of the other things we discuss, that we're all touched by personally as well as professionally. As Jen mentioned, a lot of the stuff we go into is recognition, communication, de-escalation techniques that we can use, talking about stimming, like Janet mentioned, which is sort of physical behavior that's self-modulating and self-comfending. That can be different for different people. Jen said hand flapping, moving objects like strings, pacing, walking back and forth. Some physical characteristics, not making eye contact. Like Jen said, you know, years and years ago, you send an officer to a suspicious person who's behaving like that, somebody who didn't have enough insight into the subject, might take those things as sort of strange behavior. What we want to do is educate the officers to make sure that they recognize what that may be indicative of. So we're an adult or a child who may be on the spectrum with autism or Asperger's, so we can better communicate with them. So we just emphasize the soft techniques, even tone, repeating as necessary. If somebody expresses echolalia, which is repeating your questions back to you, to recognize that that's not something that's offensive or somebody, you know, giving you a hard time, if somebody gets an expression of somebody who may be on the spectrum. And of course, these things are very different from anybody, everyone in the spectrum, just like everyone else may exhibit things differently. We want it, we want officers to have enough knowledge and foresight going into a situation that they can pick up on these cues and recognize it and then tailor their response appropriately. We also talk a lot about sort of resources that are available. In addition to Alec, the ARC, which is the Autism Resource Center for the Norfolk County, it's based out of Westwood. We talk about PECs cards, which are picture exchange communication systems that a lot of children and adults who have been through programs are familiar with. So if they're non-verbal, they're very simple picture-based communications. And we talk about the PEC cards that we provide in our medical bags for the Brookline Police Officers, as well as giving them access and links to different types of apps that they can now download onto their phones or iPads. Because a lot of programs now incorporate iPads for communications with people who may be non-verbal and use these towards communicating. And we then re-emphasize the training that we do earlier in the week. And the last day of the training, when we do our de-escalation training, we incorporate some of this through Katie McCabe, who is one of our SROs, had gone through a Train the Trainer program through a company called QBS, that does training for special ed educators that teach them de-escalation techniques and, you know, restraint techniques for kids who may be on the spectrum or have other behavioral issues. So she incorporates, in addition to the de-escalation techniques that we talked about in general, she talks a little bit more specifically about how might these might come into play when working with a child who either has behavioral issues or maybe on the spectrum. And then we also incorporate role plays to part of our de-escalation that emphasizes as well. Hopefully that was quick enough.
Any quick questions from the committee? Just speak up because unless you raise your hand. I guess one thing I'd like to ask is, could you give us the numbers of calls that could be classified as ASD calls? And just raw numbers?
It would be, it would be a very hard thing.
Okay, forget it, forget it.
I mean, for one thing.
Yeah, don't worry. Elizabeth had a hand up first.
Um specific to somebody on the autism spectrum, things like that. Um so we want our officers to again always be thinking about, you know, officer safety, of course, uh scene safety, of course, but. You know, what are the other things that could be driving somebody's behavior that is coming in as a call for suspicious? Um and then the other thing that that breaks my heart to hear about, but it's just reality, you know, we have a lot, you know, people with autism spectrum disorders are. Far more likely to be victimized and victims of crime. Um then people who have a typical typical neuro in neuro development. Um and so there are special considerations, of course, when you're interviewing a victim that you need to know about. Um if somebody's on the spectrum, you know, the way that you ask questions is important. Um. You know, if somebody's likely to, for example, answer yes to every question, that's something that we need to know in advance, um you know, so we can conduct a federal investigation. Um and then also, you know, we want to train officers about um the particularities when caregiver abuse. Again, it's, you know, I hate to talk about it, but it happens and um when caregiver abuse occurs, we need to know um. The uh particular agencies that need to be notified, you know, whether it's um TG DPT or uh. You know, L or i- if it's elder UK use case, if the victim is a child, then it would be. Um GCF. So. Where else do we want to go with this? Uh Chris, did you want to jump in? Did I miss anything?
Um, no, it was great. I I don't know if they want to know a little bit about what the training consists of during CIT.
Yeah, very briefly.
Okay, uh real briefly, so uh as part of our forty hour CIT training, we incorporate autism at one of the mornings, typically the third or fourth morning of the training. Um and we use instructors from Alec. I gen- think Janet sent a pamphlet out. Uh it's the Autism Law Enforcement Coalition. It's a group of um first responders or retired first responders who have who have immediate family members, typically children. Um on the spectrum who go through train to trainer and then go about training uh first responders throughout the state. Uh we're fortunate, we use Marty Baker. Uh he's a retired Norwood Police Lieutenant. Um in teaching for years, uh Marty's got a now twenty seven year old adult son named Drew. Who he speaks about quite a bit in his training and he shares his personal and family experiences as well as his perspective as a police officer. Um and what we focus on in the training is um, you know, it's a combination of lecture, videos, case studies. Um and I think importantly, it starts off, we we pull the room typically a a group of about thirty, thirty five officers. Who has immediate family members who are on the spectrum. Generally, I'd say about a ten or fifteen percent response positive, and we kind of talk about that a little bit. So it sort of brings it home, I think, similar to a lot of the other things we discuss uh that we're all touched by personally as well as professionally. Um and as Jen mentioned, a lot of the stuff we go into is recognition, communication, um de-escalation techniques that we can use. Talking about stimming like Jen had mentioned, which is sort of physical behavior that's self-modulating and self-com comforting, that can be different for different people. Uh uh Jen said hand flapping, moving objects like strings, pacing, walking back and forth. Um some physical characteristics, not making eye contact. Um like Jen said, um you know, years and years ago, you send an officer officer to a suspicious person who's behaving like that. Somebody who didn't have enough insight into the subject might take those things as sort of strange behavior. What we want to do is educate the officers to make sure that they recognize what that may be indicative of. So we're an adult or a child who may be on the spectrum with autism or Asperger's, so we can better communicate with them. So we just emphasize the. The the soft techniques, even tone, repeating as necessary. Um if somebody expresses echolalia, which is repeating your questions back to you, to recognize that that's not something that's offensive or somebody. You know, giving you a hard time, it's somebody, it's an expression of somebody who may be on the spectrum. And of course, these things are very different from anybody, uh everyone in the spectrum, just like everyone else may exhibit things differently. We want it, we want officers to have enough knowledge and foresight going into a situation that they can pick up on these cues and recognize it and then tailor their response appropriately. Um. Uh we also talk a lot about sort of resources that are available. In addition to Alec, the ARC, which is the Autism Resource Center. Uh for the Norfolk County, it's based out of Westwood. Um we talk about PEX cards, which are picture picture exchange communication systems. That a lot of children and adults who have been through programs are familiar with, so if they're non verbal, they're very simple picture-based communications. Um and we talk about the pet cards that we provide in our medical bags for the Brookline Police Officers. As well as giving them access and links to different types of apps that they can now download onto their phones or iPads. Because a lot of programs now incorporate iPads for communications with people who may be in non-verbal and use these towards communicating. Um. And we then reemphasize the training that we do earlier in the week and the last day of the training where when we do our de-escalation training. We incorporate some of this um through Katie McCabe, who is one of our SROs. Had gone through a training, the trainer program uh through a company called QBS that does training for special special ed educators. Uh that teach them de-escalation techniques and, you know, restraint techniques for kids who may be in the spectrum or have other behavioral issues. Um so she incorporates, in addition to the de-escalation techniques that we talked about in general, she talks a little bit more specifically about how might these might come into play when. Working with a child who either has behavioral issues or maybe on the spectrum. And then we also incorporate role plays to part of our de-escalation that emphasizes as well. Hopefully that was quick enough.
Yeah. Um any uh quick questions from the from the committee? Um just speak up, because I I unless you raise your hand. I I guess one one thing I'd like to ask is, could you give us uh the numbers of uh calls that could be cast classified as uh. Uh uh ASD um calls? And just raw numbers.
Uh it would be, it would be a very hard thing.
Okay, forget it, forget it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, for one thing.
Yeah, don't worry, forget it.
Okay.
Uh Elizabeth had a um hand up first. Uh you you did.
Thanks. I wondered, Jen and Chris, how often you run into families. Who don't want your help, who push you away, or who are afraid to be because they're being approached by the police. And um if that happens very often, or if it doesn't happen, I mean, if most of the time people are welcoming you, I just didn't know what the. Community response was to you in this work.
It's a hard thing, um you know, years ago when we started sending out the forms, for example, it was it was um. It we got stopped for reasons I completely understand. We're looking for ways to get the forms out through the school department. Um you know, through groups like CPAC and in confidentiality, privacy for people is super important and um. You know, if I didn't know us and, you know, somebody, a police agency came asking for information about my four kids. Part of me thinks they might get it someday anyway, but um you know, with this, I I would be suspicious too. I don't blame them at all. Um and so if we have an initial encounter with the family, we can offer the forms or um Katie, you know, through her work in the schools. A- and as well as Don Ellen Joe, um but I keep saying Katie because she's up at Runkel where where the RISE program is um. You know, she might try to in, you know, use a teacher to encourage them to file forms with us or or to open a dialogue with us. And my experience has been, you know, mixed, right? So. Some families, you know, will will help de-escalate a situation and then they say, thank you, we have it from here and that's fine and um and some families. Will take the form and they don't send it in, that's fine. Some people um would like us to visit them and their child every single day and that's. Great if we can and we do the best we can with that. Um. But so, you know, and and like we say at every training, you know, if you've met one person with autism, then you've met one person with autism and in one family, you know, it it's not. Um there's no one size fits all approach, so we have, we have this um and we're open to. To, you know, families have suggestions on how we can be helpful for them, then that's what we do. It's a kind of a client-driven approach.
Yeah.
Okay, um Marty, Marty, uh you have a a couple of quick questions, please make it quick and let me ask um. Can can members of the committee send you uh questions um for response? Related to the particular work of various subcommittees? Yeah, how how maybe, you know, their subcommittee work, um you know, relates to uh people on the autism spectrum. Okay, great. Remember that, committee people.
Yeah, this autism in particular, it's a passion project as well as part of my job, so um I'm always happy to talk.
Okay, so Marty, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Um so my first question, pretty simple frankly, um is it if you get a call with the kind you're describing, is it? Jen, how many officers usually repu- respond? Is it more than one or one?
A lot of that depends on how it comes in, right? Um a suspicious male, for example, in his twenties, you know, might get two or three officers who respond. Um as opposed to a twelve year olds.
Okay.
Um and and you know, what the behavior, as much information as we have about the behavior, you know, if somebody's looking in windows, you might get. Five or six cars. Um but if somebody is pacing or or talking to themselves, you know, you're likely to get one or two officers who respond, so it depends on the information.
Okay, um and and secondly, um is this i- it all integrated with the training that NAMI? Has done the mental health training or is this uh i- is what you're doing totally separate from that?
Are you referring to the forty hour CIT training that NAMI partners with us?
I think that's, I I don't know how many hours, but I know there's been training that in fact June Benny was involved with it.
Yes, definitely.
So so is it?
It's integrated into that program. It's three out of the forty hours.
Okay, and the next question is, um what you're describing is generally when you get a call identifying somebody as a as. Being on the spectrum, but. How do you deal, how does the department deal with cases where um that's not identified? But it turns out the person that you deal, that that another officer um runs into somebody, I mean, I've had cases like that as a criminal defense lawyer. And um not in Brookline, but that that seems to me a much more tricky situation. And have you got any thoughts on that?
I do. Well, that's part of the education, right, in um teaching our officers some of the the signs, uh clues. You know, where that might give away the fact that somebody has a diagnosis or not a diagnosis, but is living with um an autism spectrum disorder. Um we can, we really just cover the most prevalent. Uh traits, so we see things like no eye contact or wanting, you know, wanting to avoid any sort of socialization um. Hand wringing, pacing, echolalia, um those sort of things um.
So what, let me interrupt, so what if if what if uh a so-called regular officer, not not the two of you. Um runs into something on the street, whether it's a nine eleven call or traffic stop, whatever. And. And they suspect that there are some, some of the symptoms that you're talking about, if they've had the training. What what do they do in in that situation? Or does that ever come up?
I'm sure, I'm sure it does come up, but at this point, a hundred percent of our officers have had this training um at least twice. Between the academy um and now the fact that we are all CIT trained, if anybody. Um I had done this in service for our department back in two thousand and five. Um so anybody that's been here that long has had it and then the MPTC uh has offered it as well as part of the regular in-service training, so. Um depending on how long somebody's been here, they've received this, you know, at at a minimum of twice now in our agency.
Yeah, one last question, which is um whether you get the call or somebody else gets the call and they. Think that there's something um relating to autism in the person they're dealing with. Does that change the way the case gets handled in terms of whether there might be an arrest or discretionary issues? Assuming there's no major public safety um fear, would it? Would there be a conversation, let's deal with this differently?
Absolutely. I mean, you don't have a criminal case without intent, right? I mean, and that's really what we want to get to the bottom of is, you know, why is this person acting the way that they're acting? Um if it's a byproduct of a neurological condition, then that's certainly.
Yeah, so.
That's what needs to be considered.
What what we always emphasize with our officers, that they are going to take a discretionary approach and we encourage it and the chief, uh Chief O'Leary really kind of. Spirit of this is that they articulate, if you're going to take a different approach than something that might traditionally result in criminal charges. Just articulate it, right? Like, why did you not charge somebody? Here's why. This is what I identified. My training told me this. I then confirmed it with a parent, with a caregiver, with the person. Here's why I didn't. And you took some alternative action, referring them to sort of either services or confirming that they have services in place and that the proper notifications have been made. We always say that it actually is a longer report to do it that way than it is if you did charges, but that's something we want the end result to be and that's what we encourage. And I think in by and large, uh the department as a whole is aware of that.
Okay, I want, I'm gonna take one last question from Jonathan and then after that, if people have additional questions. Please forward them actually to uh Dan O'Leary and you you'll get answers. I'm putting that on you, Dan. Okay, Jonathan, real quick.
Uh uh Jen Jennifer and Chris, thank you for coming on. Um uh uh I have a just two quick questions. First one is, on average, uh uh how many times, I don't know, per week, per month, do you think you? Respond to um, you know, uh distress calls for, to respond to uh people who have autism?
It is a hard thing to quantify.
No, I I was just gonna say what Jen is too, Jonathan. I think it is tough to quantify because um like calls involve other issues like mental illness or. Uh things, they tend to come in as different, they tend to, excuse me, they tend to come in differently. Um like I said, Jen said, it might come in as like, you know, somebody who looks lost, a suspicious person, some low level crime. Or just something, it comes in differently than what it truly is, which can be, you know, somebody who just might have beyond the spectrum. Who just either is just going about their business or just may need some assistance, so it's a little different and difficult to qualify really accurately. Because the calls tend to come in differently than what they end up being.
Right.
Uh second question.
And then you show up on uh, you know, on the scene and then you 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 know, you assess the abnormal behavior, then you're gonna be able to go sort of down down the list. I I'm wondering, in in that regard, do you feel it would be beneficial to uh respond to? Calls uh like that with a social worker?
Um I don't think. I- it's hard to say, you know, without being given a specific case example, um our social worker is amazing and y'all, I could spend. Twenty-four hours straight talking about how great she is and all the great work she does. In the moment, um it's not necessarily. Going to be so helpful. We want to know for, if somebody is not engaged currently with services. Um then she's very helpful in making those connections after the fact, but if we're called for something like suspicious behavior, that's not a call that. Necessarily would send a social worker out to. Um if. The call comes in for somebody who 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 is just behaving out of control, um you know, one friend, when he gets overstimulated, he smashes his head against the concrete. That's not a social worker call. That's, you know, somebody, you know, if we can get de-escalate them and then it usually is the EMPs that need to respond. Um our social worker is fantastic sort of after the crisis is over um in connecting people. To services after the medical emergency or the call for suspicious behavior is handled, so I I. You know, I could use twelve more Annabels, um but not necessarily. For anybody that has not, you know, a diagnosis of ASD.
Okay, uh Jen, Chris, thank you for uh this, what I think is a very enlightening uh conversation on a very important topic. Um especially in light of uh, you know, e- everyone's concerns with uh bad interactions between police and civilians. Uh you know, understanding, you know, some of the communication issues and behavior issues that uh um are presented by people on the spectrum. Uh is is uh important to know in order to inform the work that we do. Again, if people have specific questions, uh please direct them to uh Dan O'Leary. Who can uh get answers from uh Jen and and Chris for you. Thank you. Okay. Let's move on. We are running a little behind. Remember, we have town meeting tonight that some of us have to attend, um which starts at seven o'clock. Uh so any rate, uh next, discussion of uh the proposed schedule uh for getting recommendations to the select board. Uh does anyone have any uh comments on that uh with respect to whether the uh document accurately reflects what committees are doing? Um et cetera. What, why don't you just uh send any comments to Devin and 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 we'll work it that way. Uh what I'd like to do is, once I learn how to do it, is set up a Google Docs um math uh, you know, thing, whatever that is. Uh that where we can uh edit documents together uh without uh running afoul of the open meeting law. Uh because those documents will be available to the public. Um once I figure out how, or maybe someone knows already that 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 can. Sort of direct us in doing, but you know, that's one way that we can uh do things like edit uh, you know, proposals like this. Um let let Devin know if if there are any problems with the schedule or, you know, the way that I laid out the subcommittee work. Um. Secondly, uh with respect to that, I did mention that uh I'm going to propose a new subcommittee. Um. On uh mental health and alcohol abuse, uh and the possibility of creating a drop-off center. Uh where uh some of these cases can um be, you know, diverted from uh police involvement to. Uh a drop-off center that um can be more effectively solved or or address the problems that uh the police are are dealing with. So I'd like Elizabeth to um, just second Ron, I'd like Elizabeth to sort of explain uh describe this. I'd like her to uh chair this committee. Because, you know, she was the head of the Department of uh Mental Health or whatever it was. So she she is an expert on that and I've asked Janice uh to also uh work with us. Uh and uh June Benny, who's willing to, you know, help out in this. And anyone else on the committee who's who's interested, once uh Elizabeth explains what it is. Uh please uh let Elizabeth know and um you can join the committee. Ron, did you have something that you wanted to raise?
Oh, yeah, I I I believe there's a subcommittee with overlapping responsibility to what you just proposed on the reimagining committee. So I would want the the people in this subcommittee to at least uh touch base with with the people on the reimagining committee. Um so that it's more of a synergistic thing rather than a, you know, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know what I mean?
Good, thanks. Uh you hear that, Elizabeth?
Yes, that sounds fine. That would be great. Thanks, Ron.
Uh so, um Elizabeth, talk to us.
Well, I think this subcommittee is gonna start off with uh focusing on the feasibility study. For uh probably a county-level government uh crisis and restoration drop-off center. Um really, one of the questions is at what level of government is this the appropriate uh type of thing to do? Looking first at a feasibility study, there are some best practices out there. We would look at those, weigh the pros and cons of those. For um a Brookline uh participation or a piece of or Brookline even driven. But it might be more of Brookline with a, in a coalition with other communities. Um and Middlesex Counties, people may know, is already doing this with um, uh I think using the sheriff's office and they have their. They have a proposal and they've moved far ahead with, they've they've moved along with this process. Um I think the other important thing would be to explore funding options for it because um it is important for us to identify funding that's. A realistic, uh feasible, beneficial and um uh can support something like this. So there's a lot of. Uh the first steps really are uh taking what we know. I mean, we do know June has a lot of experience here. We can, she's been working on this for a number of years. And we can tap into that expertise. We can certainly get information from Middlesex about how far along they are, what pitfalls they're running into. So we don't have to reinvent the wheel. Um and I I think that initially we'll we'll come back to the committee with some. Uh preliminary uh suggestions after we have done some due diligence.
Great. Okay, again, if anyone would like to work with Elizabeth on this, which could be an exciting uh subcommittee. Um with a a very interesting and and fruitful result. Uh just let Elizabeth know, you don't have to tell me, just talk to Elizabeth. Um okay, next.
May I ask a question?
Who who's that? Oh, Marty? Okay.
Yeah, I guess uh I'm wondering why this couldn't be part of an existing subcommittee instead of. Uh a new open meeting law setup and all that. Uh is it just too far afield from everything?
Yeah, I think so, and I think it's a really kind of a discreet topic that um is is probably best handled, you know, in a discreet way. Um also, you know, uh I want to take advantage of June Benny's um, you know, expertise and and knowledge. And I think, you know, it's probably better in a separate uh subcommittee than one of the ones we have going on now. Um, yeah. By the way, I guess we had to vote on this. Um. Can I take a vote on that? Uh anyone opposed? I'm sorry. Okay, I guess the first thing is, all in favor. Okay. Okay.
I'm in favor, but maybe you should state what we're in favor of again.
Setting up the subcommittee on uh mental health and alcohol abuse um uh programs. Um in the form of a drop-off center or or similar things.
Is it also other substance abuse?
Probably better to call it substance abuse.
Yeah, that's.
Bernard, could could we maybe name it Mental Health and Substance Use Disorders Committee? Mental Health and Substance Use Disorders Committee?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, good, good point. Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, did you get all that, uh Devin?
Yeah.
Okay, um Casey's asking, could we include services for homeless as well? Um I think that's a little different, but uh tell me.
I was just gonna say, I think it will inevitably include homeless because so many of our homeless individuals in our community. Do have often dual diagnosis problems of mental health and substance use, so homelessness might be one aspect, but. They're they're going to come, that's gonna be one of the groups that I think shows up.
I think Casey was asking because uh her subcommittee on community outreach, use the non-traditional roles. Is looking at the, you know, some options for dealing with homelessness um separate or in addition to. Um work that the police is doing. Uh so talk to her and, you know. Whatever you want to do.
Definitely, we could definitely link there, Casey. I think that's a good idea. Yeah, thanks.
So next, um as everyone, as I'm sure people know, the uh state legislature uh. Uh file or issued a uh policing reform bill. Issued a policing reform bill out of a conference committee. Which means a compromise bill between the House and the Senate. It now goes back to each chamber for an up or down vote and then it goes to the governor. You know. And he can veto individual sections of the bill. And it would take a, I think, two thirds majority to override his vetoes. These bills are passed in each house with fairly with fairly slim margins, so. It's unlikely that any veto would be overrobed or overturned. But he's also has put forth a policing reform bill. So I don't think that there's going to be any major problems with getting his approval for the, you know, main parts of this bill. So let's discuss that. I mean, does anyone really, has anyone reviewed this to the point that they can? Give give some insights on what what's in the bill? You know, and it's 123 pages. I have to admit, I have not read it. I've just read newspaper reports, but okay, Marty?
Well, and I haven't studied the the final bill. I've looked at earlier versions. The two things that jump out at me that, I mean, there's a lot of things pertinent to our work. You know, some specific things like banning chokeholds, which we've already done. But the two things that jump out to me, I think the state, this new agency that's going to be. I forget what they're calling it, a police accountability.
Post, a post commission.
Yeah. I think that they will have some statewide civilian review powers. And certainly the accountability subcommittee needs to look at. Integrating what we're doing with that process, assuming this gets passed. I haven't heard much argument about that by the governor. The second thing that I'm kind of disappointed, there is stuff in there about racial profiling. Including more power for the attorney general to get involved, but what I don't see. And this is what, you know, we initiated in Brookline 1997. Is statewide statistic keeping, which has been a problem getting it through the state house. Since about 18 years now, there was a two year period with a sunset. But that passed, so that was quite a disappointment to me, but we have it. I was hoping they'd also put in driver population statistics, but. My quick glance at it last night, I don't see any of that stuff. So I think that. I guess, I think that Paul and Ron are going to look at the racial profiling data issue for Brookline. But you should, you need to look at what's in this new, in this bill, assuming it gets passed. It may have some implications, but I don't see a lot of help out of it.
Any, any other thoughts? People who have. Taken a look at this or thought about it?
Hi Bernard, this is Anne.
Oh, hi Anne.
Um, I've looked at like the first 900 lines and I don't know how many pages that is. Um, but there's, there are commissions set up for African Americans, Latinos and Latinas disabilities. And the social status of black men and boys. And that includes both funding staffing their jurisdiction as far as research and policy recommendations. And then there is the the connection where the the records of law enforcement misconduct. Are available for as an exemption from FOIA so that that right now you don't get sort of the personnel records on that, but you would. And it looks like the new state agencies would define the contents of police academies. They would certify police academies. They would approve or certify candidates to become police officers at all levels, both at the local and state. Level. And so that would be sort of taken out of the local area. And then there are required courses that include civilian interaction, procedural justice, developmentally appropriate de-escalation techniques, including with kids. There is specific training on substance use disorders, mental illness, trauma. Developmental and intellectual disabilities. Training on mass gatherings, cultural competency, is a special certification for school resource officers. With training additionally for everyone on autism and developmental and intellectual disabilities. There's a prohibition on using facial recognition technology. And then they get.
We're way ahead of a lot of this stuff.
Yep, there's a lot, there's, you know, the the next section goes into the standards commission as far as. What they'll go through and what what you have to be able to do. That's about as far as I got in the first 900 lines or so. But this state commission and state training agency is going to be the place where the requirements are defined. For both acceptable candidates to be police officers. Police academies and compliance with whatever the state recommendations are.
Yeah, I would urge people, I mean, it's 123 pages, you can probably get a link in the. Globe articles to the bill. I would recommend that people maybe concentrate on the peace officer standards and training commission provisions, which. Probably, I think, are the sort of central piece of the legislation. To try to understand, you know, how it relates to what we're doing and whether, you know, it's preempts. Some of the things we're doing, meaning that, you know, if if the state adopts this stuff, we don't have to worry about. You know, doing it also in Brookline. I'd also like people to look at it critically. I know police unions, I don't know about Brookline's union, but are concerned about some of the issues there. And, you know, those concerns should not be dismissed. Rather, we should try to figure out whether they are valid and, you know, in order to fully understand. What the legislature is proposing and, you know, what what we need to do in areas that are under our jurisdiction. So. Any other discussion?
Bernard, I just want to throw a question for Anne to look at. I'm pretty confused. I did glance just now, there's a whole section 107 of the bill. Starting with lines 2386 on civil service. And it kind of puzzles me because it it seems to set up a commission. To study civil service law for municipalities not subject to civil service law. And I'm not sure if the next four pages talk about civil service. Municipalities already, whether whether they're going to study that, because it seems to me. That's a different issue. Anyway, I'm hoping you, I'm sure you'll look at that at some point.
And the Personnel, Structure and Mission Subcommittee should definitely focus on that. I think that it doesn't preempt what what we're doing on this committee or in that subcommittee. But you should be aware of, you know, what what the legislature is proposing and how it may or may not. Impact, you know, what we're doing. That's. That's Elizabeth Child's committee, so.
Yeah, actually, I, you know, I can add that I intend to spend at least a few hours this weekend. I don't have. I haven't had much free time this week, but this weekend I spend, I tend to spend a few hours. Looking through, you know, very closely this this bill, so I can. Way in at a later date. I just don't have that information in my mind as of right now.
Yeah, and actually by the time of our next meeting, the governor probably will have. You know, done whatever he's gonna do, so we'll have a final bill to look at. So, yeah, that that's good. And by the way, you know, people should just skim through the bill. There are there are things that will affect various subcommittees, for example. It addresses no knock, situation, no knock warrants. That is something that Paul Yee's committee. On civil rights, military equipment and what whatever the other thing. Oh, mass events, your subcommittee was was going to look at that. So, you know, so maybe. This answers the questions that the subcommittee had, or maybe it raises other questions for Brookline. There may be, let's see. In my notes, I mean. Everyone should look at, you know, what it does or what it says about the use of force. Does, you know, does it help or hurt, you know, us in in terms of that issue? My guess is that it's probably not as advanced as Brookline's use of force policy is, but that's just a guess. Knowing that, you know, sometimes what comes out of the state is not always. The best. There is a provision to require an officer to intervene if he sees another officer using physical force. Yeah, I think some of the subcommittees should look at that and and see, you know, what that what that even means. So. You know, the the issue of what is the standard for the post commission to open an investigation? Apparently it's based on evidence that is deemed sufficient. I think that that. Was, let's see, that standard was changed after some concerns were expressed by civil libertarians. As to the earlier standard or the Senate standard of predominant preponderance of the evidence. Which I think some civil liberties advocates said that is, that that is, the police standard is. Different from the civilian standard and as a result, I think in the conference committee, they they applied the lesser standard. So there's a lot of stuff in there. It's going to be an interesting read from the standpoint of the work of this committee. I urge everyone to, you know, at least skim through and 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 look at things that catch your your interest. So that we can have a good discussion next week or next at next meeting, so I'll put that on the agenda for next meeting. Okay, let's move on. Committee report. Let's start off with Personnel, Structure and Mission. That's Elizabeth. Do you want to give a report on where you're going, what you're doing?
Yes, so we so we met the week before last and the primary work at the committee in that meeting was to work on civil service and officer health and wellness. We've made quite a bit of progress with civil service, understanding in communities where it's been used, how it's. How the transition has happened and the pros and cons are getting clearer. One is that we can replace openings more quickly. We have a, if without civil service, we can have a broader pool to choose from and we are not restricted. To the short list of bypass appeal. People coming up again, we can set hiring priorities and should do that. There's potential to save a little bit of money. And the critical things that the committee has yet to do are are three, really. One of them is to make sure. That the exam itself does not discriminate and is fair. And we are in the process of doing some exploration to be sure that 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 can happen and is the case, it would be important for Brooklyn to do that. There are ways, I think, to do that, but it's important that we do that upfront. The second is to identify clearly upfront how, given that the point of civil service was to take. Politics out of hiring and to have hiring be merit based. How do we make sure that we make in this, without civil service, that we make sure that hiring is merit based? For the good of the community, for the good of the police department and not politically, politically. Involved or, you know, influenced in a in a negative way, obviously. And then the last one is to deal with the morale issues of doing a transition like this and. And we're going to be asking you to come to our subcommittee as soon as you can get us on your on your dance card. So that we can talk about the impacts and the interface of civil service and HR. We know that scenario, we need to understand. And the second one is actually, it communities that have done this successfully have have heard from the police union early in the process. To hear what it means for them and how they would do it and or what their reactions are. And so we'll be talking at our subcommittee meeting coming up about how we would do that. The second major issue that we took up in our last subcommittee was on officer health and wellness. And I want to share a quote that is in the 21st century report. By Yale Law Professor Tracy Mears. Why would we bother with this? Why is this so important? And the quote is, hurt people can hurt people. And so that is the reason, the primary reason to tackle this issue seriously. And Paul Yee on our committee shared a shared a study that they've done in the trial court where. When stressed, how much stress and wellness impact performance and when. It's not dealt with, stress hinders making decisions based on using your rational mind. And instead, the default is to making decisions based on your subconscious or your or your biased mind. And so it becomes a very direct link to what we're trying to achieve here in terms of reform. To focus on officer health and wellness and. So that's, we're starting with that, we're starting to work on that project. And then the last thing we're working on is. Michael, poor Michael, Michael's got a lot of work on our committee, he's invaluable here. But we're working on the summarizing some of the governance and the roles of the police commissioners and talking about. Structurally considering an ombudsman to help respond, how that would work into a structure, a governance structure. Around responding to civilian complaints. So the other aspects of our committee will tackle more at our next meeting, which is tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM.
Okay, and with respect to the, what you call ombudsman. The Accountability Committee is also looking at that, so they just should, I I don't think, you know, it should be in one committee or the other, but. There should be communication between the two. I mean, logically would be in your committee, but I think. Marty in particular, as I understand, is very interested in that, so, you know, I don't want to prevent him from.
Right, we want to work, we want to work together on you. We, our part was trying to figure out how it would work into the governance structure, but we we obviously need. Drug forces on that issue.
Okay, okay. Yeah, next, well, next is accountability. That's.
So.
Michael Zurov.
Yeah, I can give an update, although Marty, I think Marty wanted to say something, if it's relevant to this, I think. It makes sense to share it.
Just the last one, I'm hoping to see drafts of the mission. The global stuff, I've, you know, I've worked a lot on that, as I've said. Including 1987, so I'd be happy to have some input into that particular issue. And secondly. I still wonder if. Some deviation from civil service would be possible for more diversity hiring. I know that's a tricky issue, but and it may require some home rule legislation, but. I don't, I don't want us to rule that out. If it's absolutely impossible, then so be it. But I'm hoping that will be part of what what's being looked at for civil service.
Yeah.
We are looking at that, Marty. I think so far we're not finding much room to do, we're either in or we're out, I think, is the issue here. But I think you raised the question, I don't know, Michael, do you want to add anything about that? I mean, that's my understanding, but I'm no lawyer.
Yeah, this has come up before and I think the answer has been that, yeah, it's it's either you're in or you're out and it's in, the removal is. Or the manner in which you remove or withdraw from civil service is statutory, so it's. And the language is in the statute as to how you petition to withdraw.
One quick comment on that, I I do think that the times have changed a little and. I'm not talking about getting out of civil service. I like it for for discipline reasons, although I wish the commission were. A little less soft hearted towards misconduct, but but what I'm talking, I do think that the, you know, given. What's just happened on the police reform bill and everything else. We've seen in Brookline, there might be more openness to some tweaking to get some more diversity out of the hiring process without. Getting out of civil service, so.
Okay, let me mention this, I mean, we we've tried, we got stuck at the legislature. But as I understand, and I'd like Dan to sort of elaborate, there are workarounds. To, you know, to civil service to allow diversity and I'm thinking of, you know, focusing on. On the high school, recruiting at the high school, at that public housing authority facilities and things like that to. You know, just create, increase the the pool of of people and increase the diversity of the pool. That, you know, can get into the pipeline to the police department. Are there other workarounds, Dan?
I think a lot of what the department's been doing, and I use walk and talk as an example. We took a look at walk and talk being in the housing. Uh, we took a look at walk and talk being in the housing since nineteen ninety-one, ninety-two. And our uh candidates that we've hired to the department. Have grown over the years from residents that live in housing. I think Casey did a did a look at it for us, and I think we have about twelve members of our department. That um lives at one time or another in housing, and I think that's a great. A great amount of people, you know, from one separate area. I I think everybody would like to see it expanded, but I think the programs, the community outreach that we do, we have a citizens' police academy for high school graduates. Uh, high school students, uh, several of them have been joined the department. And I just think stuff like that, that the department can do on a. Regular basis and just developing relationships, getting people to be interested in policing, seeing what policing is about. And then uh, if possible, they can apply for civilian jobs that we have, such as media collector or. The dispatcher center until they get old enough or want to finally make a decision to take a civil service exam and. We'll get quality candidates. We have gotten quality candidates through those routes before, and there's no reason why it shouldn't continue.
And and uh, people don't have to live in Brookline to be uh in the dispatch center?
No, they don't. Uh, several of our candidates, several of our current offices came um. Came without being residents of Brookline. They got housing in Brookline, um, got their residency preference, and then I'm getting hired by the police department. And one example of that is is Will Walker. Will didn't get hired as a dispatcher. He was, we didn't have any openings, he got hired as one of the media collectors. And that's how he stayed in town. He was one of our co-op students in Northeastern. He stayed stayed in town. He got housing, got his residence, and got hired as a police officer.
Can I ask if we can just get a one-page summary of the diversity trends for the last ten to twenty years? In terms of uh department employees, I I'm not aware of that existing. If it exists, then someone get it to us, and if not, could someone put it together?
We'll try to put it together, yes.
Okay, and and actually, I'm always thinking about the report that we have to do. And um, you know, what needs to go in that report. One thing I think would be useful uh and very just educational is. You know, we're always concerned about how civil service restricts um diversity hiring. And um, if we can, if uh, I guess, Dan, if you could do a write-up of how. What I call workarounds have been used to to increase diversity hiring. In in spite of civil services uh, you know, opposition, so. True, I I think that that's, that'd be an important part of the report. Okay, let's get to the accountability committee.
Yep, so a few updates. Um, one thing we've been doing the last few weeks since this broader committee has met. Is hear from people who filed complaints against the police department at our subcommittee meetings, and we're gonna keep doing that. Another thing that we've been working on and made some progress on uh was creating a web form for filing a civilian complaint. Uh, against a police department employee, um, which is something that I really wanted. And uh, it seems like Dan and other people in the police department were able to uh get that done. Um, I think it still kinda needs to be placed somewhere prominent, but the form is done. There is a web form now, which I'm excited about. As kind of a one way to make it a bit uh more straightforward to file a police uh complaint. Dan, maybe could we just briefly touch base on that? Like, when when is the form sort of going live, I suppose?
I'll see, I'll throw it to Ron. You had that conversation with Ben today?
Well, okay, so there we're we're, I were actually talking about uh two uh different, slightly different, but closely related things. So in addition to the formal uh complaint form, there's a formal, there is now a formal complaint. Initial form, a formal complaint complaint appeal form that are web forms developed by the police department and and are on an exact par. With the commendation form. And those may even be live already, so that's that's number one. Secondary to that uh is the thing that I've been working on, which was uh a a a a quick, how are we doing? Response uh that civilians can make to an encounter with the Brookline Police. We've been talking about that for a few weeks and on the li- the latest revision to that, I made after feedback from our subcommittee meeting on Monday. And at the end of that particular uh Survey Monkey feedback form, there are links to the uh complaint forms and. The uh or there will be links to the complaint forms and the commendation forms, so that's what's going on there. If I may, I'd like to share my screen and show you how it.
Before you do that, Ron, can I just throw something in here?
Sure.
I don't mean to be a a hack or or a bureaucrat, but um. I think uh at least I saw on our website uh that you're asking for the committee to approve this.
Well, yeah, I actually, I thought that would have to be true, but is that true? Or is that, is that not true?
No, I, it is true. I think the committee should approve these things and and send it to the select board to approve. I I don't wanna leave the select board out of this, I mean, I.
Okay, that's, that's fine. That's gonna be relevant to what I'd like to, what I'd like to say. Come, I like to share my screen. I wanna show you a couple of things. Okay, so I I will do that now. So let me just kinda move this out of the way. Okay, can everybody see my screen? What I, what should, what should be visible? Uh, this is a kind of a simulation to how the uh, the uh, the the quick response form would look. On uh, on an iPhone, uh, so um. It pretty much comes into, uh, you know, when did it, when did the encounter happen? You can put in a date. Uh, you can actually put in a time. I won't do that now. Uh, describe what happened. It might be something like uh, you know, a traffic stop. Coolidge Corner. You know, I was upset, you know, whatever. This, you can, you can type it as much or as little as you want here. Then uh, you know, then it's overall, how would you rate this encounter with the Brookline Police? You can say, let's say somewhat negative, uh, and then uh, would you like to identify any police personnel involved? If you say, if you say yes, you 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 get a page where you can put in uh as many as three different police personnel. First name, last name, badge number, any, any of the, any of those three is possible. And then um, if you say no, that this page doesn't come up, that is, would you like to identify yourself? If you, if you say yes. Uh, you get uh the personnel form. You can say minimal name, email address, phone number. All those are are optional, and you may put in other information as you would like. Uh, and then you also have the the option of saying, would you like a survey interview or a contact you? And it's just yes or no. It doesn't change the logic, but it's just whether or not you want to or not. And then, that's pretty much the end. So it says, thank you for completing the survey. Uh, at any time, you also have the option of filing a formal detailed complaint or a formal detailed commendation. And uh, here are the links to the forms. Those aren't live links, but I would put, we would put links to those three, those three detailed forms right over here. And that's, 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 and that's the end of the uh, of of the survey. So I just wanted to show you that. That also, it also can be filled in on uh a a tablet or 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 desktop computer as you wish. You know, the formats look a little different depending, um, it's that. Yeah, I won't really kinda go into it, but it, that's the way we'll look on a, on a desktop computer. This is the way it will look on a tablet. So I just wanted to show you that. Then uh, getting back over here, this is a document I I I put a a around that. These are the decisions I think that at least the police reform committee needs to make. Number one, we need to affirm or recommend that we wanna make this survey available to the public. We need to the to decide how to publicize, assuming that we do that, we need to decide how we wanna publicize it. And the suggestions are on our soc- social media platforms, you know, uh Twitter, uh Facebook, uh Instagram. On the town website, we can put printed media notices uh that include both the written out URL and even with. A scannable QR code that's very easy to do with Survey Monkey. Uh, we could put those as announcements in the tab of the patch. We could even put posters on a bulletin board, but we'd have to decide how we wanna do that. But uh, I know um, Michael, uh Zurov and I have said, we'd like to be able to disseminate that as widely as possible. Cause we think we get a lot of useful information that way. Then we've gotta decide who is gonna monitor, analyze, and have some little access to the responses. You know, I mean, it could be within the police department. It could be a a separate civilian uh person. Certainly, while it, while these uh committees uh are are active, we would wanna take a look at what's on there, but we'd wanna. I'd like to see this as a permanent part of resources for getting a feedback about the Brookline Police. And then we have to, we'd have to decide who will have overall responsibility for maintaining and or updating the survey going forward. So those are all things that we need to just think about and recommend. Uh, and I I just, I just wanna leave it at that for right, for right now. So obviously, we, well, maybe not obviously, we probably can't like vote on these things right now. Maybe we could vote on them next week if we, if if if. I or someone wants to come up with rec, you know, recommendations for for those four, for those four items. Um, and that's pretty much what I wanna say at this point. I'll stop sharing my screen right now.
Ron, can I make a couple points?
Sure.
First, I don't think on the form, the link to the appeals. Form.
Take that out.
Makes sense at this point, because that would only be after they'd already had the investigation. Um, and then second, I think at the subcommittee, we can work on a proposal. And approve related to these four items, a formal proposal that we'll bring next time.
Okay, sounds good.
And and um, you should uh think about your whether uh this should be rolled out to the select board. Separately or with the uh revisions to the complaint process and and policy?
Yeah, I think separately. I think this is sufficiently, but I did wanna say one more thing, though. So we we do, as uh Ron indicated, um, and I said earlier, we do now have a web form where folks can submit complaints to the police department. But I don't know how you actually find that form on the website. Like, when I look for police complaints on the website, I just see the original, like. What we had before, and I'm just sort of wondering if we can add the form to the existing webpage on civilian complaints.
Hi, Michael. This is Devin. I'll check in first thing with Ben Vivante uh tomorrow morning and make sure that that is live and ready to go.
Awesome, thanks. Yeah, it is. It definitely seems to work. I've seen the link from Dan, but I don't know how to actually find the. Find the link on the website, except through the email from Dan, so.
We we kept it, we kept it off the website for people to practice and check it out.
Yeah.
Do it that way. It is, it is ready to go according to Ben.
Great, so I just wanna make sure that it, you know, gets deployed. Um, that's all.
I just wanna mention briefly that uh it, we can also put the uh, the town logo on the uh, that little uh feedback form. To make it a little, look a little more official. That's just a minor comment, but anyway, that's just, yeah.
And and by the way, I wanna just again say um. Do these things, should these things be uh submitted to the select board? I don't want the select board to say you you you're ignoring. You know, our responsibilities and going around us.
Bernard, this is Devon. I would say the first piece that Michael is talking about is extremely easy and administrative. Honestly, it was probably just an oversight in the years as um, you know, the technology developed and that sort of. Got left behind. Almost all of our forms on the website are fillable, so there's no reason that this one shouldn't be as well.
So I just want, I just wanna make sure that that issue is thought about uh as we go forward.
Yeah, I think it wouldn't be cool, uh, I mean, I would appreciate it, I don't know, if you add it as an announcement at the select board, you just. Said this is something the police reforms committee did, so maybe.
Okay. Could you uh send me some language?
Oh, I guess so. Uh, terrible week for me, maybe not as bad as you, but anyway.
Or or, I I, you just sketchy language, I I'll fill it in.
Yeah, no worries. Uh, I did wanna just finish a couple other things. I know we've been on accountability for a minute, but um. So we have also been working on uh some possible changes to the police manual, especially about retaliation. There's been some. Controversy, I guess, as to whether, whether and how the HR policy about retaliation applies to the police. I mean, it does, of course. But what it encompasses and whether it encompasses things like a police officer. Making another police officer's life more difficult because they reported the former for misconduct. Um, but we've been looking at a little bit of language about prohibiting retaliation. We're still working on that. It's in the packet. Maybe it's not worth dwelling on now because of time, but I wanted to flag it. And then two things related to the complaints process we've been working on as, has come up already, some role for an inspector general. The implications for bargaining, uh, if this person is gonna directly oversee civilian complaints is there. And so that's something to to negotiate, but it's something we've talked about. And then also the select board's role as a. Something that hears appeals is something that um, we've been talking about and perhaps creating a new civilian. A group of civilians tasked with um, you know, hearing those appeals or otherwise. Playing a role in overseeing the complaints process, so that's, that's part of it. Um, that's all I have to say.
Okay, work clear, work closely with Elizabeth on that. And uh, yeah, okay, so um.
All right, can I make a quick comment back on Ron's thing?
Yeah.
And the feedback form, which is um, I still, I think that before this gets used, the one sentence, it's not up on the screen anymore. But it talked about agreeing that this will be made available. I don't think anyone disagrees with that. But the question I've raised at the subcommittee, and I still have, is how it will be made made available, and I think before that. Adopted as a, as a policy of any kind, we need to straighten out how it's available. For instance. Is it available on the street or is it just available in a website? I mean, when when Ron's talking about using a cell phone. That suggests that you're talking about people on the street, but I don't know how that happens. You know, if a cop talks to someone on the street, are they supposed to say, well, by the way, do you wanna look at a feedback form? That's a complicated question, frankly. Anyway, we we need to get the word how in there before it's adopted as a policy.
I was thinking of it in terms of at at least being available um on social media. Uh, and making people aware that it's available on social media, so that if a person has uh any, and and, you know, and. Likely an encounter uh with a, with a police officer on the street, they could always eventually, you know, later. Use their cell phones or 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 whatever to uh, to to get an, to to find an easy link on the town website or or or. You know, on on social, on other kinds of social media to just uh, to 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 link to the form and just kind of fill in their their response. We can also consider, though I think it might turn out to be impractical, whether you wanna have uh officers, you know, hand, hand, hand. People a little card saying, hi, I just had an encounter with you. Uh, would you, is a link to the, to the website to give us feedback? I suspect that's probably impractical. But on, to me, as long as we, i- i- as we, uh, the the ability to give feedback is well-publicized. Uh, on social media, uh, I I would think that we would, we would get some very useful responses. Yeah. I I would, I I'm very interested in hearing, though. I mean, do the, the, do the, um, I mean, do Dan or or Casey have any thoughts about that?
On 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 getting feedback?
Yeah.
I I think feedback's important, definitely. Um, and and I I agree. I think that it should be publicized, that it's not. Just for complaints, it's also for commendations and good work and um, we hope that people can use it and. I I think one of the ideas that was talked about was getting a um, a scan code or barcode put on a, on offices on business cards. We do. That I think the department does give out, give the officers business cards to give out and it is a matter to do it as well.
Yeah, okay, well, it's very easy to get a QR code from the, from the Survey Monkey forms.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that would be really helpful if I can just, I'm sorry to interrupt, um, just because so many people. Aren't necessarily tied to our social media and we interact from, with folks from, you know, certainly outside of Brookline that might not be following Brookline Police. You know, Twitter, Facebook and whatnot, um, but I do think that, you know, for both positive and and less positive interactions. Officers would 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 encourage people to go to the, to the form and fill that out. You know, it's, and I think it's also a way that we can hear feedback for, you know, less polarizing interactions, one way or the other. About what people see in the services that are being provided and and make adjustments um with that and probably answer questions or, you know, someone witnesses. An officer having an interaction with a community member and they may fill out the form, and it might be a great um opportunity to, you know, educate the community. On what that, what that inter- interaction was, um, or to speak with an officer about, you know, what they were doing. I think there's a lot of positives on both sides.
Okay, that's good to hear, encouraging.
So uh, let me add a couple of things that uh, I hope people have read the document I sent out regarding the schedule and timeline. Um, and uh, the subcommittee work, subcommittees work. Under accountability, I added two things that for some reason has created some controversy, and that is. Listening to complaints of people who have complaints uh about the police. Now, this committee is not a complaint-receiving committee, but, you know, the complaints uh that people have can inform. Uh, the work of the committee, so that I think that's really how we ought to view uh citizens' complaints that come, come to our attention. And um, in the uh, in in the uh. Under the accountability subcommittee, I've listed um, that the committee will receive and screen complaints. that the committee will receive and screen complaints of people who have identified themselves to the subcommittee and review civilian complaints over the past X number of years to identify any weaknesses in the process. In both those cases, the point is to identify weaknesses in the process or other things that enable us to suggest useful reforms in the complaint process or in the procedures or behavior of police. So, so that's just something else on the committees. But again, if people, and people should read, you know, my list of the work of various subcommittees, make sure I haven't missed anything or misstated anything. And to make sure that the timeline I've laid out is workable. So.
I have a question about that. You put under our accountability, review duties by rank and assignment, duties of sergeants. That's a very big issue, but I'm not sure it's accountability. I mean, there may be, there will be accountability issues that will be part of that. That's a bigger topic that you've listed.
Okay. Frankly, I just went through the, the table of contents of the Policies and Procedures Manual and identified things that seemed to me to be relevant to these committees. So maybe I selected something that is not relevant, but that was in there because one of the duties of sergeants are to monitor and supervise officers on the street. And, you know, that is sort of related to the supervisory procedures that your subcommittee is working on.
No, I understand that, but I think generally the topic really goes under personnel structure.
Okay. Thank you. That's, 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 that's good to know. You hear that, Elizabeth? If people have other comments like that, please convey them to the appropriate subcommittee heads, you know, without deliberation, but just, you know, give them, give them information like that. Okay, next, civil rights militarization and mass events. Paul Yee.
We didn't have a meeting, but our next meeting is Friday, December 4th at 2 o'clock. So I'm done.
Okay, so the list of things that I put in the document regarding your work areas, if you have any, well, I mean, tomorrow's, I guess Friday's meeting, you can, you know, fix anything that I got wrong.
Okay.
Okay.
Right.
Next.
On this one, I'm still not sure how we're integrating Paul with Ron on the racial profiling data question. And if, if we need to impose on Paul to try to attend our subcommittee meetings to talk about that. We've talked about it here and I think that Paul graciously agreed to work with Ron on that a little.
When you set up, Marty, when you say our subcommittee, you're talking about the accountability subcommittee specifically?
I mean, I know specifically I've wondered about profiling data broken down by specific motor vehicle offenses, which I think might be enlightening. You know, we got a lot of data broken down by statutory names, but numbers, but not by labels. And I'd be very curious to see how the profiling data comes out by actual statutes. Like, you know, equipment violations, et cetera.
But, okay, so I can talk with Paul. I know that I believe Raoul showed something, it's not, wasn't quite as detailed as that at the reimagining meeting, it was actually kind of a little eyebrow raising to see certain motor vehicles break, stoppage breakdowns, moving violation breakdowns by ethnicity. And so I could see, number one, I could talk with, talk with him, but I also probably could work with, with Casey or someone else to find out, first of all, how Ralph got his data specifically. And number two, to see how well we, how easily it would be, I don't think it would be hard to tell you the truth, to, to break it down in more detail, the way you've just described. So, I mean, should I have, should I set up a meeting of, say, Paul and myself and Casey? And maybe even ask Raoul about that? Does that sound appropriate?
If I could, if I could jump in, I provided Ron with all that information.
Oh, okay.
The only, the only question is, all of our data that goes into this racial profiling computers, computer program that we have at the station is hand put it, is hand.
Input.
Hand input it. We scan in the document, so the document is scanned and from that a clerk fills in certain fields. So the only thing that might hold back on some of the things is those fields have not been documented. We ran into it today when we were talking about how can we get the information on Brookline residents that have been stopped versus Boston residents, Cambridge, you know, surrounding, Newton, surrounding communities. We only, the clerks only enter, are you a Brookline resident? Yes or no? So everyone else is considered a non-resident. So that might be a hangup. I'm gonna have to find out how much we can actually get, if we can get it based on just the stop. The only, the only trouble with just the stop is if you get multiple offenses, what, what really was the initial reason? So, but I'm sure that can be worked through.
So, and I think the raw data that you provided to the reimagining task force is in our, in our web, on our website, correct, Devin?
I think it's on the reimagining website. I already looked at it. So when, when I was thinking about the racial profiling, I had not really asked Dan for any more information because there's a lot of information that we have from the reimagining committee that Dan had put together about the different categories of motor vehicle offenses and the like. And also with the annual reports, there's a lot of data there. So the other issue was what Marty had brought up a couple of meetings ago. You know, what is the benchmark, you know, to compare? What, when or not there is racial profiling? So, you know, Marty sent an article about a crash data. So is that the benchmark we should be using or should we be using a census data or should we be using?
Windshield survey.
What, so all kinds of different benchmarks and if, and, you know, different people have different critiques of different benchmarks. But I think the one that I'm sort of thinking about in, I was gonna go with the committee was what, what we have is the total universe of all cars stopped by Brookline Police. That would be the denominator. And then we would compare everybody else to that. Because otherwise, it's kind of difficult to include, you know, the census population of Newton, the census population of Boston and the like. And we had discussed, you know, there's different peoples, you know, going through Brookline, you know, throughout the day. If you, if you get on the 66 bus, it starts from Nubian Square, it goes all the way to Harvard Square. I mean, there's all kinds of different people on there. If the traffic that's going through the town of Brookline, there's all kinds of traffic from the different cities and towns that we, we interconnect. So I think that the universe should meet all the cars that have been stopped, all the pedestrians that have been stopped by Brookline Police.
Well, I have a quick suggestion on this.
Yeah.
It seems to me that, that the, the study that was done that Chief O'Leary knows about by, I think it was Jack McDevitt's people at Northeastern, did crash analysis. But that is a little out of date. I don't, I don't think it would be that expensive to have a current professional study doing of the driver population estimates for Brookline. I've done it in a case, it was a state police case in Chelsea a few years ago. And I had a client who could afford it and we paid for it out of pocket. It was quite a bit for a private client, but for the town, I think it would be something to consider as an expense to get a current benchmark. So we don't have to decide that now, but I'd like Dan to think about it, whether that's something worth proposing. Because out of the town budget, it's a little easier than out of my client's private wallet.
Off the top of my head, I'd say yes. And we tried to look to do it and update it at the PD, not through the PD. We try to, we actually tried to link with the frat house from MIT that's down around Ebbetsford Road there. And we were going to get them to come out and replicate the Northeastern study. It fell through at the last minute, but, so it never got replicated since it was done by Northeastern in 2009, I think.
Could you ask Jack what it would cost to do something under his supervision, maybe with some students?
I'll ask that question, yes.
Okay. Next, Community Outreach, Youth, Non-Traditional Roles Subcommittee, that's Casey Happy, right?
Yep. So we did meet on November 20th and we heard from our school resource officer, Caitlin Caneely, at the Brookline High School. And she gave an overview of the work that she was doing up there. We had a nice discussion. Janice, Jonathan, Bernard, myself, some members of the community that were logged in. I apologize, I have a dog that is refusing to leave me alone over here. It was, it was a great discussion. We talked about the types of issues that she deals with at the high school. You know, kind of what her role is, what the responsibilities are. She gave some examples of work that she does. We're going to be sharing with the committee a diversion, an example of the diversion contract that she uses for youth at the high school that she, that she works with to keep them, you know, out of the criminal justice system, keep them on a good path, working with families and the school administration on, you know, specifically like nonviolent offenses to just make sure that we keep kids on the right path and not in the criminal justice system. We also talked a bit about the Walk and Talk Program and I again shared the, the two fact sheets and the Walk and Talk video, which was produced by the police department and discussed the survey, which I'm happy to report, we have mailed out, I believe now 1,200 surveys. It was, not without a tremendous amount of assistance from Town Hall, the copy room and the mailroom down there. So I'm grateful to Morgan and Paul for their, their assistance. And so those surveys went out and again, we sent them in English and translated into four languages. The Brookline Housing Authority was notified that it went out and all of their managers are aware and will be able to answer questions that might come in from residents as, you know, kind of, you know, what is this that I got in the mail? And they also will have the fact sheet that was produced so that they have specific questions about how the program started and what the responsibility and roles of the officers assigned to walk and talk. They'll be able to answer that and share that with residents. Caitlin Starr will be receiving those surveys when they start coming in. I have not touched base with her yet this week, but we do expect that by the end of the week, there'll be some there waiting for her. She has graciously volunteered to do the data input and using an online survey. I believe it's a Google Analytics that she's used for other surveys conducted by the Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations Department. And she will save hard copies of all responses and those will be scanned and shared as well so that everyone has access to the raw data as well as the aggregated numbers. So we'll be working with her to, you know, update the committee on, on those surveys as they come in. Our next topic for that committee will be the issue around homelessness. So I'm really excited to work with Elizabeth on her project. You know, just specifically, we've had some, some issues recently with homeless population in Brookline trying to access resources. And in my research, both for our subcommittee and my work, my day job, we're really running into, you know, a lot of dead ends and finding any resources for homeless in the community that don't involve the police response. And so I think we can all agree that that's not the preferred response, being homeless and many of whom have mental health issues is not a criminal behavior. And so, you know, I've been in touch with the Health Department, we've been in touch with Brookline Community Mental Health, Department of Mental Health at the state, trying to find resources. And unfortunately, you know, we're not, we're not finding that there's a lot in place to assist with, with some homeless residents that we have that really need more than a police response. And so we do need to schedule our next meeting, which I anticipate will be early next week. And we'll move forward on, on that discussion as well as, you know, kind of honing in on some of the other topics that, that were on our list.
Great. And by the way, Casey, I think your dog needs a comfort human being.
She is so excited to see me when I got home. My kids kind of kicked me into this room because they're decorating our house for the holidays and I guess they didn't find our meeting to be kind of part of the jovial spirit and kicked me into the room with the dog. And so, yeah, she's, she's very excited to see me. This is Finney. I also have an uncleberry who's her brother.
Okay, any discussion on that? Okay. Any discussion on anything else?
Down meeting.
Pardon me?
Down meeting.
Meeting in, in 44 minutes. So, again.
24 minutes.
24? Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, 24 minutes. Okay, remember, let me just emphasize again, please read that document I sent around. Schedule for getting recommendations to the select board. Make sure that your subcommittees can meet this schedule I laid out. Begin putting together pieces of the report. It doesn't have to be pretty or anything, it just has to, you know, have an outline of what, what you're going to be discussing and preliminary recommendations. Also, look at the list of subcommittee work that I have there and make sure I didn't get anything wrong. Did I, you know, miss, leave something out? Did I put in something that shouldn't be there? Did I misstate something? So, you know, I think that, that, at least from my standpoint, that's a working document. So we want to make sure that it's also an improving document. Our next meeting will be on the, what, 16th of December? So I assume subcommittees will be meeting before then. They should be. And we will take up discussion of the Police Reform Legislation, which we should, you know, have some final versions of by that time. Let's see, anything else? No? Well then, let's end the meeting. Thank you.
Good night.